Good evening, welcome to the Board of Education meeting.
Mr. Ball, you're keeping up straight.
Your agenda?
Let me tell you, this, I, well, that's possible. Uh, the Will there.
Pause the video if you need to look at it a little closer.
I could bring this with me to Georgia. But I'll let my people explain for us.
Things will be discussed in the meeting. Mr. Ball is at a conference, I believe, in Washington. He attended last week's meeting also by video. So that means he is now excluded from attending except in person. He's gotta be in person, rather. That means he's now on for twelve months. Our school superintendent is also on video tonight. And from your left, Chairman David Mathis. Vice Chairman Sandra Blue, she's on her way. Mr. Ball would sit in the middle. Anne Kendrick and Sam Brown. And we will be getting started in just a few minutes. But as we have a forum, we are recording.
The enjoyment technology in Ricardo.
Where are you doing?
I'm not in the car in about two minutes.
Where's the conference?
Get back in.
Corinne, so you're going to the Friday conference?
Say again.
Are you going to the safety conference?
Um, is that the safety conference?
Yes.
Is that, is that what you had?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I've rehearsed before, but I, I, I'm not sure if I'm gonna make it, so I may cancel, I'm not sure.
Okay. Are you going, Miss, Miss, uh, Ray?
Yeah, she's planning. Ms. Ray, you're planning.
Thank you, go first.
Yes.
No, ma'am, I have, I have another conference in Mountry, uh, Georgia DOE Teaching and Learning.
Okay.
Instructional conference that day. Uh, Mr. Lameter, Mr. Lameter is attending.
Are you taking it?
I can't, I've, I've got, I've got a vehicle.
We can schedule that.
I've, I've got a vehicle already, uh...
Reserved.
Sure.
So what time do you miss?
I don't know.
I'll take that, see what vehicles I have.
Okay, so you got it, it's ours. Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, this particular conference, there will be students, there's gonna be a panel of students and, um, parents that are gonna give every special home school service. So. Well, sometimes we want to apologize to different things, but sometimes I do try to, it's a thing that they...
Listening to my booth, they get started, um, if you wouldn't stand with the please, we're gonna get your plate please. My goodness, thank you.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another day, thank you for the rain you sent us, and thank you for your many, many blessings. Or I pray that we will conduct this week with, with some wisdom, and we hope we got our wisdom, and if not, please give it to us. And I pray that you would wa- continue to watch over the students and the teachers and everybody that's involved in our school system and the community, Lord. Be with the families that have lost loved ones in the shooting, and you continue to watch over us. Or in Christ's name I do pray, amen.
Amen.
I'm glad that we use students' lives, that we honor their sacred spirit. And to the root of which the saints, one nation under God, indivisible, the living, the dead, the strong.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick. Before we can start, the nine individuals we got, our superintendent and the board vendor, Mr. Corinne, Mr. Ball, virtually tonight. Uh, Mr. Ball met with us virtually last week as well, because he planned a meeting here at six o'clock. We had to move up our meeting, um, to three o'clock to accommodate some other schedules for those ones, one big football game over at Mission County. Um, so he is with us virtually again tonight, and I appreciate y'all being with us. Uh, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I mean, of course.
I have a motion from Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ball, all in favor?
No.
Uh, no students or staff recognition? Uh, vote participation?
Then it's on.
Uh, item number six is item required Board actions recognition of superintendent. To have approval of last month's meetings. A motion from Ms. Wood. Second, from Ms. Kendrick, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of the July two thousand twenty-four financial statement?
My pleasure.
A motion from Ms. Wood.
Second.
Second, from Ms. Kendrick, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of the SPOS budget?
My pleasure.
A motion from Ms. Wood?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Kendrick, all in favor? Approval, approval of the Canadian High Budget Summary?
My pleasure.
A motion from Ms. Kendrick?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Ball, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of the Canyon Planet Reconciliation? A motion from Ms. Wood?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Kendrick, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of the Cortez On Your Cheer or Trust Account Reconciliation? A motion?
I wonder if I'm missing anything. It is a four, four thousand something.
Four thousand nine hundred and nine.
I guess I just gotta stick together each summer.
I have an age requirement, would you like one?
That's okay, okay.
I have a motion for Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second, from Ms. Kendrick, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of the HR recommendations? I have a motion for Ms. Kendrick. Second, from Mr. Brown, all in favor? I call for a vote of the HR recommendations, Mr. Ball?
Uh...
Approval of the twenty-first CC LC grant board notice?
A motion?
I have a motion from Ms. Blue, second.
Second.
Second, from Mr. Ball, all in favor?
Uh...
Ms. Kendrick, approval of the two, uh, approval of the FY twenty-five CTAE Consolidated Plan and Budget?
I have some questions that I, I should've asked him last week, but I didn't study enough to, to question it, so I guess I'll step back with this, um, corner later.
Do I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Brown?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Blue, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of transfer from COM one building fund to GFO one, Georgia, Georgia Fund one other, a motion? A motion from Ms. Blue?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Kendrick, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of the CTAE Global Educational Opportunity with ES Tools?
How much motion to table this?
Second, for all, what is it, table?
Yeah, she, she, um... I had a, I had a motion to approve, and Ms. Kendrick made a motion to table it.
I made a motion, motion to second to approve?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I asked for a motion to approve it.
And I said, I made a motion to table.
She needs to table it, Mrs. Kendrick has to table it.
I'll just say in a second.
Okay, so do we need to... We need to vote, we need to vote for, to approve it first?
Well, I think you got a motion to approve, you got a motion to approve.
All right, so I do not have a motion to approve it, I do have a motion on the table to, uh, table it. Uh, discussion. Now, he, he rescinded it.
I'm not saying to table it.
He, he, he rescinded it in a second, he thought, he thought it was approved. So I have, I have a motion to table the approval of the CTAE Global Op- Global Educational Opportunity with ES Tools.
Second.
I have a second to table. I have, I have a motion to second to table, uh, table this approval.
I think just for, just for the record, I think you asked for a motion to accept it, and you didn't get it.
Right.
Is that right?
That's true.
Okay, and then somebody made a motion to table, but then you seconded that, so that's what's happened.
Okay, so I have, I have a motion to table item K, and I have a second to table the approval of item K. All in favor to table? I have three votes to table, Mr. Ball?
I'll vote no.
Okay. So we will table that, a vote of three to one? Item L is approval of the Victoria Evans Memorial Library Contribution? Do I have a motion to approve?
After ten thousand.
Have a motion to approve the library contribution to be ten thousand dollars? Do I have a second? I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Brown, would you do it? No, this is good, I mean, this is about, I, I have a, I have a motion for Ms. Kendrick, and a second for Mr. Brown, all in favor?
Uh...
Approval of the Child and Adult Care Food Program application, do I have a motion to approve?
I made a motion.
A motion for Mr. Ball? Second. Second, from Mr. Brown, all in favor?
Uh, Ms. Ray, is it possible for us to craft a thank you letter to, uh, Ball and Kennedy School Superintendent and their chairman? Uh, because this program, uh, was brought to our attention, I didn't otherwise would have not, you know, known to even, Mr. Matthews, now, you know, be part of that based off of conversation with them. So I, I would like to extend a thank you to them, uh, for even letting us do this.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Chairman, I also ask that, um, all of the board vendors, there's two different documents, one of them you and Mr. Goodman's design, and one the entire board needs to sign.
Okay, we'll take your lead.
For the ZF, yeah, okay.
Okay, item seven is, uh, House Bill five eighty-one, which is the homestead exemption?
I don't know where she wants to add, do you have anything else to add to that, Ms. Ray?
So i- if I'm understanding correctly, and I just wanted to make sure I understand, having information break, we, we got one time to decide whether we're gonna accept the homestead exemption, whatever decision we make now will be whatever it's gonna be for the, for, you know, forever, is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
Decision.
But we just have to, is...
Right, then. The decision doesn't have to be made and submitted until March first.
No, no, I'm saying that whatever decision we make, we're stuck with that decision forever.
That is correct, that is correct. Unless there's another constitutional amendment.
Yeah, okay.
From the second, right.
If you have any more discussion or question, questions regarding, how to do that anymore?
I'm sure it'll be on here several times.
It will be, it'll be on every month's agenda, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item is the reevaluation letter that, uh, we received in the mail last week. Anybody have any questions regarding that?
I, yeah, I don't, well, I don't have any questions. I just think perhaps we need to get somebody in to explain or talk to us that knows a little bit more about it. Um, I was talking to Ray Jordan, and he suggested, well, I think it suggested, he just said, that Steve Smith in Fletcher County was excellent, he knew all about it, and he was a, he was doing some consulting, but he also said that Jim Cochran, who's at Pioneer Risa now, is a good one, and he would consult me with the chief of state, he said, so. I, I, I think that's a good idea, to bring him in and let him just talk to us about what, what we don't really know.
Can, can I ask a question, Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Uh, to you, I guess, do, do we know, have we got any information about what it will be?
No.
What?
But, but, if you will remember, Craig gave us some figures, you know, that if this, if this, and that's what, um, you know, I think there's, I think we just need a little more explanation, you know, of what we can and what we can't do. Uh, because I've done heard that, yes, the school board could go lower than fourteen meals, and then I heard, no, you don't wanna do that, and then, um, we go so low, then we lose QBE, and if we go, you know, it's just, there's just a lot of questions out there, I think.
Well, the first one is that if we did go below fourteen, we did lose equalization funds, which, um, Ms. Walker is probably there, but I think it's about one point three, one point four million. You know, it would be significant, um, so, yeah, that, that, that is about.
Well, equalization, but I, I told you if we went even lower than, of course, we don't wanna lose that either, but if you go so low, you lose QBE altogether, that reminds me of something. Anyway, that's...
In my conversation with Ms. Walker, I think she said we would have information in October, that would be the earliest that we're told, when we're told that we would get the information.
Okay. Can I add?
It'll be safe for us a- as a board, because people are probably gonna ask that, you know, we just be upfront, we don't have the information right now to, to, to make any kind of decision. We could make a blind decision, but that wouldn't be the best decision to be made.
And I, I've been telling people that, that we're going to do this in the best interest of taxpayers, obviously, um, as far as, you know, being fair, um, with the bull we receive from taxpayers.
At the same time, we don't want to hurt ourselves, hurt, hurt the system, you know?
All right. All right.
And we are pulling numbers together, um, we are getting some preliminary numbers, um, and I had spoken on the phone with Joe Wright, and I have shared that with Mrs. Ray. Um, and so she and I are working together to fill out some spreadsheets, and we hope to bring that to you soon. We were talking about maybe, it, it, that might come up at the retreat, because we're getting more information from the state.
I just, I've just had it on my mind, because it's just top of my list.
Any more discussion?
Excuse me?
Item nine is the board retreat planning, we discussed, uh, a few dates last week in our workshop meeting, um, we still have those before us. I guess we're still kinda trying to decide what fits our schedules best.
Were there any of those dates that were possible solutions, or do we need, need to go back to the drawing board and come up with some additional dates?
This weekend is not good.
And, and we probably not gonna get a lot done in, in the afternoon, evening session, I think in the past, did we do like a full day, guy?
We did, yeah.
That's what we talked about, yeah. Yeah, we always, it's always been a little bit.
Okay. Item ten is the green house quotes, uh, you received last week. If I have anything else that might add to that, any questions that you may have?
Do you have to bring them or what?
Uh, this is not for approval tonight, correct?
Correct, this was just FYI, but the sooner that we can approve it, obviously, the sooner that we can get on either the replacement, um, or the repair, so that we can have the ready for second semester for those courses.
So I vote on replacement.
I, I, I vote to replace it too, the need was, if we're gonna have these...
And we did have, we did have grant funds available to cover those replacement costs.
Right, so that makes sense, that's perfect.
So do we need to vote, or do we, I mean, it's not on the, the agenda to...
It's not on the agenda, uh, action, uh, can, can we, can we add this for, um, for us to take action on this one?
That's another whole month, that scares me. We get down to line sometime, it gets here before you know it.
Could we amend the budget to move it to the actual line?
Amendment the agenda.
Add it?
Amendment the, yeah, sorry.
He said, yeah, 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 it's up to you, it's, it's on the agenda, I'll say that, it's not under a action item, so to speak, if it wasn't on the agenda, you can't add things to the agenda, but, you know, it's up to you.
Can we call for a vote?
It's, it's, it's an item on the agenda, it's item, um, X, this is a green house quote. But, um, you typically vote on the items requiring actions recommended from the superintendent under, under that category. But, um, you do amend, at times you do amend, you have, of course, you've already proved the agenda, but, uh, it's a little bit of an paradox, but, but it's not like it's not on the agenda at all. So, um, if you think it's something of a necessity, um, that is we do discretion, I think, it, it is on the agenda. So, um, up to you. If it's listed under quotes, that you wanted, if you felt it was something that was...
Would you, would you call for a vote?
Well, I'm just saying, if you felt it was something of, of, of a great need, that you really needed to do it, otherwise, you could probably leave it to, um, as you usually have it under items for action, but, um, but...
Ms. Jordan, is there a limit on this quote, I mean, a time limit on this quote?
Uh, no, there's not a time limit on it, um, because I still have to send it up to the DOE, and they'll give the final approval, so...
The other thing you could do is you could add it to the next work session, like that call meeting for that particular purpose.
I just saw this, I had it after seven days, after August thirty.
It's still not on it.
It's, 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 I've had it.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so, I know, uh, Ms. Wills will be making it, and, I mean, her classes too have something to do with that. Yes, she probably. So, well, I believe, would that be right? Or you're, we're only gonna get it by certain date anyway, or would that, the sooner we get it, the better it's gonna help you with classroom?
Yes, so all of the spring classes are plant science-based in the horticulture categories for classes.
That's what I thought, Ms. Ray.
All of, all of mine are.
What I was saying, I'm gonna interrupt you, it's, uh, it is on the agenda, and if it's something that's come to light during the meeting, that was anticipated to discuss it tonight, and you want to approve it, I, I think you can.
Um, for, for Claire, it's, because I, I didn't hear her, well, did she say that these are the classes she's teaching this term year?
Yes.
That is correct.
Did we not teach our class last year?
Some.
Actually, we hear, well, all these places are not taught?
Not all, not all of the classes are taught.
Some, some.
I guess I just might not understand why we waited till the need was so great to do it, or, or was it not a need, we want to teach our class, I was just trying to understand a lot behind that.
We didn't have the grant at the time. We, the grant money just came.
Who, who, I can't hear it?
The grant money just came available this year.
Ms. Walker said the grant money just became available this year.
And we...
I guess, I guess that's not my question as well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying about the funds, I'm saying the need, um, having not, teaching classes, and that's why we haven't needed the, the, uh, replacement, or had the need just arose now because we're teaching, I guess that's what I'm trying to grasp, the understanding of.
The, the need has been there, but the, the funds to, to fix it, you know, and, and we knew that coming forward with the new school, that there would probably be, we would get the capital outlay, CTA grant to, to fund that. So there was not a, a huge rush to fix the current, if we were gonna have in a year, funds available to replace it.
And the classes don't start until, until January, am I correct? This January.
But the sooner we tell them, what they're beginning, that's soon to do, that's why most things are. So that's what I was, they could get jumped on it, maybe. They rarely, it's, it's.
Does that actually request a response?
Uh, no, but I, I'll take it off, I, I think, I, I, I won't muddy the waters, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to Ms. Ray, uh, well, I'll, I'll speak to the board, so I, I guess my question is, if, if, if there is a need that's in our schools, that's for the board to determine the priority of what we can afford and can't afford, so I would, I would hope the administration would break it forward, um, the need, and that's make that decision, not holding, you know, if we've got classes that have needed this for two years, asking if there's something that we waited to a budget, and that should be something we should do, I, so maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I, I can take it up line and follow that way, maybe next month.
I think they've just gotten by, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we shouldn't have just been by, we should, you know, we, the board should have known, maybe we could have allocated funds last year for, I guess that's what I'm saying. If that was a need.
Should we call for a vote?
We will call for a vote for the greenhouse courts to replace the greenhouses. Do I have any? I, I need someone to put it in form of a motion with which, with which quote we are accepting.
I made a motion to, to, um, move forward with, um, buying, purchasing the new, the new greenhouse. The Senate, instead, they said the grant, say the same where it is, we don't have that cost, and others covered by, um, budget, I mean, grant money. So they basically.
So I have a motion to accept the two quotes to replace the greenhouses. I have a motion for that, do I have a second? Have a second, Mr. Brown, all in favor?
Uh.
Yes, yes.
Now, that's just the little greenhouse.
Just the little.
And the, and the big greenhouse.
Yeah, that's the two.
Yes, that is correct, the forty-one thousand and the ninety-six thousand. Forty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one and ninety-six thousand twenty-eight.
Item eleven is information items for board.
All right, I provided the construction update Thursday evening. If you have any additional questions, um, I think I, I don't know if I sent pictures, I actually did another walk-through on Friday afternoon, and was able to walk up the grand staircase to the second floor, and was able to walk right on the second floor. Um, so I do have some pictures I can share from that, um, but the progress is, is moving along at a swift pace right now, and it will slow down once the major work is completed, and they're doing the detailed work on the inside, but right now it is moving at a fast pace, and it's, it's exciting to see. Do you have any additional questions or, or specific updates that you made regarding construction?
We hope that they can be able to work inside or some- somewhere during this rain, it's supposed to be coming.
We can move on that news, Ms. Ray.
Okay, all right, um, the loan list was provided, um, that had the specifics that the athletic departments, um, and the coaches had requested, so you have that in front of you. Just another information, the FY twenty-four local board training report was submitted. And then we have the annual conference and workshop coming up for GSBA, GASSA, um, December eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, and the registration for that will be opening up on October the first. We have our next strategic planning session, and this will be the community's planning session, um, that will be held on September seventeenth, but we'll do our spot analysis with them at that time, um, and that will take us to the next step in the process. Um, it was attached to the cross-country schedule, and we are still waiting on RNTC and the Rockleton schedules, so as soon as we get those, we will get those to you. It was suggested or asked in, uh, last week's work session to potentially change the venue for the future Board of Education meetings due to the parking lot that we normally park in outside of the Civic Center Conference Room, um, being taken over by JCI. And it's my understanding that, um, the board would prefer to stay in this current venue, is that correct, or do we need to look at additional venues for future meetings?
That's great, that's great.
We do have Mr. Lavender, um, Mr. Mathis, Ms. Blue, Ms. Kendrick attending the safety training September the twelfth, this Thursday.
I would not, I would not be able to attend that.
Okay, all right, so we will have two board members and, um, our director of maintenance and operations in attendance. Our scholar athletes, we announced our weekly two, week two scholar athletes, um, to those that have been announced, um, and Mr. Baker will be publishing the week one, week two, in fact, I think week two probably will come out this week, and then week two coming out next week, so he'll be, um, a week behind us in the newspaper announcements. You were provided a district newsletter copy, a hard copy, um, that you can also obviously, uh, utilize all of the links, go through all of the newsletter, everything that's provided, if you wanted to access that online, and, um, I provided some social media analytics, um, at the board work session. And then it was asked, something Mr. Paul asked for the state law, which was twenty dash two dash four one one, that, um, Ms. Walker had found for us, um, referring back to the use of public funds in order to purchase fabric for athletic teams, and that is the information that we were able to find.
Yeah, I, I do want to state out that I am, so this is not just attorney county interest, um, there, there are several districts around the state of Georgia, and we are, I'm working with them and through attorneys, because, so there is not a state law, there is a attorney general opinion that dates back many, many years ago, and so they have not been revisited, but what they're, so a lot of schools are taking the opinion that it's not a law, it's just an opinion, so, um, I, I wouldn't suggest we do that, but that's what other schools are, are starting, well, the boards are, are, are starting to question, um, is it law or is it just an opinion? And as of the moment, as we have, is this an opinion, it's not actually a law, uh, it's just a true general opinion, but I don't recommend this board proceed, uh, without, um, us doing our own due diligence and that, but that's, that's what comes up for another day.
Okay. And item twelve is items from the desk of the superintendent.
For your information, as a reminder, several months ago, you approved our, um, the MOUs, and they were signed for us to continue with GS, at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars for the school district and two payments of a hundred thousand dollars, and we just wanted to notify you that that four hundred thousand dollar payment invoice has been received, and that payment will be paid.
Do you have any other items to come forward with before we go? I have a motion for a adjournment. I'm voting for Ms. Kendrick.
Second.
Second for Mr. Paul, all in favor.
Uh.
Thank y'all for joining us tonight.